Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process, and we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638 or meganet.net.
Good evening, and welcome to the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, June 3rd, 2024. It is exactly 6:30 PM, and I would ask that you please silence your cell phones and please check that they are silenced. And if anyone in this meeting is making a video or audio recording of this open session meeting, please notify me as the chair, and the placement and operation of any recording equipment shall not interfere with conducting this meeting. I would ask you all to please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome our newest member to the board, Heather Goldstone. Welcome.
Thank you.
And we will now look to reorganize the Select Board.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to reappoint you for another year as chairman.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
Just comment that I think you're doing a good job, and I'd like to see the way things are going, and I'm happy with the agenda that's been set, so carry on.
Thank you, Douglas. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, by roll call, please.
Scott Zelinski, aye.
Ms. Calley, aye.
Brown, aye.
Heather Goldstone, aye.
Okay, thank you all. And I would ask that we continue to keep our structure the way it is. I've worked with Mr. Zelinski for the past year. I feel like it's gone really well, and I'd like to continue with that, so that is my nomination for Scott Zelinski.
Well, I'm just wondering if we should give Bob a chance. I think Scott does a good job when he's in the meeting. I just wonder if your work commitments are something we might wonder if it's really best for you to be?
Personally, I've structured my work commitments to handle the vice-chair roles, and I've structured my work around that, so I can certainly cover, I can cover my duties as vice-chair.
Okay. As long as you don't feel like you're too busy.
Well?
Now, Mr. Ball, Ms. Calley's pretty much retired, right?
Pretty much.
Pretty much.
Not completely.
Not completely.
I know, I'm still working, I know it could be a challenge.
Yes, I get that.
So if you feel like you can commit to it and still do it, I mean, I'm not going to fight you on it, but I just thought I would mention, I think Bob's ready to go. If you wanted to consider stepping back a little.
So what are you looking for, a second?
I have a motion.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Scott Zelinski, aye.
Thank you. By roll call.
All right, Brown, aye.
Goldstone, aye.
Ms. Calley, aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that doesn't mean that Mr. Ms. Calley will not be a vice-chair and a chair at some point. Okay, we're going to move into proclamations, and I have a few of them. Mr. Ms. Calley, I'm going to ask you to read them, please.
Okay, the first one is proclamation declaring June 7th through 9th as Wear Orange Days. Whereas Hadiya Pendleton was a 15-year-old and an honor student, and whereas Hadiya was shot and killed in Chicago in a case of mistaken identity a week after she performed at President Obama's second inauguration, and whereas Hadiya's birthday is June 2nd, and whereas Wear Orange originated on June 2nd, 2015, on what would have been Hadiya's 18th birthday, and whereas her parents, Cleopatra Cowley Pendleton and Nathaniel Pendleton, picked the color orange to honor her and remind us that the color orange is what hunters wear to protect themselves, and whereas the color orange honors the more than 130 people killed and the hundreds more damaged by gun violence every day, and whereas guns have become the leading cause of death for American children and teens, and whereas it is observed nationally on the first Friday in June and the following weekend each year as National Gun Violence Awareness Day and Weekend. Now therefore, we, Nancy Robbins-Taylor, Edwin P. Zelinski II, Douglas C. Brown, Robert P. McCallion, Heather M. Goldstone, as the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby proclaim June 7th, 2024, to Be Wear Orange Day and June 8th and 9th Weekend to Be Wear Orange Weekend in Falmouth, Mass. And witness whereof, we have here and to set our hands and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed this day, Monday, June 3rd, 2024.
There's the motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and a shout-out to Nan Logan for staying on top of that. I appreciate that.
So, Madam Chair, with respect to the second proclamation on the agenda honoring the service of Rabbi Elias Lieberman, who will be retiring after 37 years, we've been asked to put this over to a further meeting so that the congregation could muster some people and have some support here for him. So that will go over to maybe our next meeting.
Thank you, and thank you for pursuing that.
And then the final resolution is a resolution of proclamation congratulating the Woods Hole Golf Club on the occasion of its quasi-quincentennial year, which I've told is 125th year. Whereas the Village of Woods Hole is located in the Town of Falmouth, in the County of Barnstable, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and whereas the Woods Hole Golf Club, located in the Village in the Town of Falmouth, in the County of Barnstable, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, founded and incorporated on October 24th, 1899, is celebrating its quocentennial year. And whereas the Woods Hole Golf Club is a foundational and historic organization in the Falmouth area, and whereas the Woods Hole Golf Club was formally incorporated under the names of Francis C. Foster, James Dwight, E. P. Boggs, Henry W. Harris, Henry H. H. Fay, A. A. Ripka, and F. Anthrop Foster, and whereas the original nine-hole golf course was designed by Alexander Findlay, later expanded to 18 holes by Thomas Winton and Wayne Stiles, and whereas from the outset, the club's founders intended the club to be an endeavor that promoted friendships, families, and sense of tight-knit community, and whereas the club promotes, hosts, and encourages involvement in numerous charitable causes like the Eastern Amputee Golf Association, the Francis Womet Caddy Scholarship Fund, the Falmouth Fund, and the United States Golf Association, and the Massachusetts Golf Association. Therefore, be it resolved that the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth congratulates the Woods Hole Golf Club of Falmouth, Massachusetts for all of its good work and recognizes the historical and community value it holds for the Town of Falmouth. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution suitably and grossly transmitted to the leadership of the Woods Hole Golf Club in Falmouth, Massachusetts. And witness whereof, we have here and to set our date and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed, Nancy Robbins-Taylor Chair, Edwin P. Zelinski II Vice-Chair, Douglas C. Brown, Robert P. McCallion, Heather M. Goldstone.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So we have the motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Ms. Calley.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move into recognition. Mr. Renshaw, do you want to kick that off?
Thank you, yes, Madam Chair. I have the honor to introduce the Cape Cod Wheelchair Curlers out of our very own Cape Cod Curling Club here in Falmouth. The group won their U.S. Open Wheelchair Bonspiel in Portage, Wisconsin over the weekend of December 2nd and 3rd of last year. Madam Chair and Select Board, the members of the Cape Cod Wheelchair Curlers are Megan Lino, Steve Davis, Sean O'Neil, and Mike Wright. We also have the honor of Senator Sue Moran here in attendance tonight to present citations to the members of the group. Senator Moran?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Other than an incredible feeling of deja vu here, I am absolutely thrilled to be able to present this award for a couple of reasons. I think that most of you know, I grew up, my dad was a disabled veteran, in a chair for pretty much my whole life, and he became an accessibility resource and expert. And I can say that there is really not a better example than these four individuals that are here today, and it's my privilege to award them. And I want to tell you why it's so incredible. The Scott Terrell, who is, at one point, tried to teach me to curl. Dave Viera, our representative, put together a team called the Election Sweepers. And, I know, yes, laughing is appropriate. So I had the pretty awesome experience of being taught, and I will tell you, A, I know that it is not my career, it's definitely something I should never do again, but B, you know, I just want to, it's not just the physicality of it, it's also the teamwork, the support, and I don't have to tell any of you that. So I will read one of the citations, they are the same. They are from the Commonwealth State Senate. And be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Mike Wright, Sean O'Neil, Megan Lino, and Steve Davis. Cape Cod Wheelchair Curlers, in recognition of winning the 2023 U.S. Open Wheelchair Bonspiel, am I saying that? Wow. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that the citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate, Karen Spilka, the clerk, Michael Hurley, along with myself. And I just really want to thank you, not only congratulate you for your achievements, but for all that it takes to have that kind of camaraderie, so thank you so much.
The recipients have a request to have a picture in front of the board, would that be all right?
Megan, was this your idea? Of course.
You can call them.
Of course. Known Megan Lino for forever. And congratulations. I want to make sure we have the town manager involved as well, if we could get you guys, yeah, if we can all fit us in, that would be fab.
Don't get too close to me.
Should we stand?
Yeah, you want us to?
Well, I think it'll be too much.
I think we should sit. Yeah, we need to sit.
Why don't you shift over this way a little bit?
Yeah, Doug can stand because he's taller. Can you get everybody? Don't get too close to me. Congratulations again.
All right, we'll see you next year.
Do you have a recognition and other to mention?
I'll get there, yeah, yeah. Thank you all for coming.
Madam Chair, I would like to recognize Mike Duffey, his family, and his business for once again putting on the Free Memorial Day Concert, sponsoring the choral group Skylark. It was a very well-attended event and just a marvelous charitable sponsorship on behalf of Mike and his family and business.
Awesome, thank you for that. Anything else, Mr. Brown?
I would just briefly mention the recognition for the zoning board. They work so hard, and I don't know if they get enough appreciation. They just, I think, concluded their review of the Saxon Partners Project, and what a challenging application that was, the switch of the plans at the last minute, but they maintained their composure and they completed the meeting without incident, so I'm glad I'm not in their seat at that moment, because that's a very challenging application, and I think they're doing a good job with it.
I would agree with that. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anything else from the board on recognition?
Yeah, I'd like to recognize all the volunteers that did all that work at the Joe Q Veterans Center. I got a chance to walk it on Memorial Day, and it is truly impressive and so well-needed here, and I'd just like to thank everybody that participated in that, because it was true labor of love.
Good point.
And it's such a community effort over there. If you listen to Carissa April or Carol Kenny talk about all of the different community members who have put sweat equity or...
Their own money.
Their own money. It's an incredible place, so thank you all for your recognitions. Anything else from the board? Okay, moving forward, we'll go into public comment. Public comment may be made tonight on routine matters that are not on our agenda. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please, when you approach the podium, introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on this agenda, the Select Board will not participate in any discussion or debate of your topic. Anyone here for public comment? I'll start with you, sir, and then, I did see your hand.
My name is Tom Stone, Precinct 6. I want to, the Vice President of the Falmouth Gun Safety Coalition, I want to thank the board, Mr. Renshaw, and the police chief for working with us over the last couple, several years, actually, to reduce the number of guns in Falmouth through the police buyback that we did a number of years ago, as well as the destruction of those 22 guns recently. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Matt Hanley from Precinct 6. I just want to bring up, I also attended the ZBA meetings. Doug's 100% right, that meeting was astronomical. I wish our high school students were actually there to witness democracy at work. I want to also say, I've been reading the paper, and I've noticed that the Town of Falmouth is trying to get more transparency and greater effort into representing the community and listening to their voice, which is much appreciated. We really got to see freedom of speech and why public hearings are so important in this town. The residents of that area really did their homework. They just weren't getting up saying the same thing over and over and over. Everyone got up with a different, on-point view of how this project was going to impact their homes, whether it was light, noise, water runoff, habitat infringement on habitat, traffic, you know, even the public drinking well. So they really did their homework. I'd like to urge the board to look into a couple of things. One of the things that was brought up from that meeting is that the new National Heritage Maps, the Fish and Wildlife Maps, have taken a lot of protected habitat off the state maps. The 2009 maps are greatly different than the new maps, that where they were, they took animals' habitat off just because someone didn't report it currently, and that's wrong. And then these developers are taking this opportunity to put big projects like this because the National Heritage Maps don't show that these, there's protected species in those areas. The, and previous to 2009, those areas were identified. I also like, as far as freedom of speech goes, I'd like to see all boards in the Town of Falmouth return to open hearings. It was really important that these are butters.
Sir, you're at your two minutes.
Okay, but, so I'll just finish up and say, let's get all the boards and committees back in Falmouth, back to open meetings with a high bread if people can't because of health issues.
Thank you.
Can you do your reports, or do they need to?
Anyone else here for public comment? Okay, we're going to keep moving. Mr. Ms. Calley, you just asked me to back up. Go ahead.
Just two announcements. One is that this Friday, following along with Mr. Zelinski and the Veterans Center, is the Soldier Ride, this Friday, starting at 9:30 in North Falmouth. It'll go to Woods Hole and then back again. And then on June 12th, the Cape Cod Commission will be holding a virtual public hearing dealing with the YMCA proposed on Brick Hill Road, and you can access that public hearing through the Cape Cod Commission website. Thank you.
Or send an email in advance.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Ms. Calley. Okay, we're going to move into committee interviews, and our first one is for the Board of Health with Jed Goldstone.
Madam Chair, I'm going to recuse myself for this interview.
Thank you. Mr. Goldstone?
Hi, I'm seeking a reappointment to the Board of Health. I was filling a short-term appointment. I'm seeking reappointment for a full three-year term. I can go through my, I was previously, for nine years, on the Board of Health. I don't know if you want to go through this. I'm a toxicologist in Woods Hole, I have a PhD, and so forth.
Does anybody not know this person?
No.
Okay, he's been around for forever. Anyone have any questions of Dr. Goldstone? Mr. Zelinski?
No, I don't have any questions, but I'd be happy to make the motion for a reappointment of Jed Goldstone to the Board of Health for a three-year term until June 30th, 2027.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
So it's unanimous with one recusal.
Right.
Thank you so much, Jed. Okay, we're going to move into the Historical Commission, and our first one up is Annie Dean. Is she here? She isn't here. Is Joanna Reed here? Joanna, would you join us, please? Welcome.
Hi.
Is there anything you would like to share with the board that is not on your application?
No, ma'am.
Okay, easy.
Just happy to serve.
Any questions for Ms. Reed?
I believe all these applicants are incumbents, and they're fully experienced and ready to go.
Is that a motion, Mr. Brown?
I make a motion to appoint Joanna Reed for term...
June 30, 2027.
Sounds good, June 30, 2027. Thank you.
I have a motion.
I'll second Mr. Brown's motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mason Wilcox, welcome.
My name's Mason Wilcox, I'd like to continue my appointment.
Is that it?
Nothing else to say. It's been fun to be on the board so far.
Any questions from the board, Mr. Wilcox? Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
I don't see the dates, where am I? Are they also 27? I'd make the motion to appoint Mr. Wilcox, if I could find the term.
2027 is correct.
27, June 30, 2027.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Okay, and Annie Dean?
Can I speak for Annie Dean? I don't know if you guys can move on that, or?
I mean, she's been on there and doing a fine job. I don't see why we couldn't.
She has been. Is there any reason?
Is there anybody else on the list?
No.
Or should we reschedule her interview?
You know, the charter says that the board is supposed to interview regulatory boards.
Right, and I think we should, because it is a regulatory board. So I think what we will do is we will reschedule. I agree with you in theory, Mr. Brown, I really do. She's been around for forever, but I think we need to stick to the rules, and we'll reschedule.
Put it high on the agenda so she doesn't have to wait a whole meeting.
She doesn't have to wait around. Okay. All right, that was easy. Okay, committee reappointments. So in your packet, you have the list of uncontested seats, so I would entertain a motion to reappoint committee members as listed in your packets.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Anybody have any questions? You have that reappointment list in the back, in your packet, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
I'm fine with it.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, so tonight, we have, and we're pretty much on time, we have an update from our Cape and Islands District Attorney. You see it, there he is.
Good evening, everybody.
How are you?
I'm living the dream. Thank you very much. Permission to approach, Madam Chair, with some, a handoff, everybody?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'm like the lawyer to me.
Thank you, sir. He knows how it rolls. He knows how it rolls.
So, I realize you have quite a full agenda, and congratulations. So I'll keep my remarks brief, close to five minutes. So I do have a few things that I want to talk about, but the very first thing I must speak about is that for the first time in the history of the Cape and Islands DA's office, we have what's been described as a forward-facing website. The information's actually in that packet right there. It's capeandislandsda.gov, and we're very excited about it. It's loaded with a lot of information, and it's interactive in the sense that you can sign up for various updates by email or text messaging, so we're trying to keep up with the times. And perhaps one of the best parts is that was pretty much the product of really hard work by one of Falmouth's own, Catherine Bumpus, who's in the office, or in the audience here today. So we're really excited to be able to go forward and launch this and maintain a level of transparency that we hope to maintain by sharing what we're doing with the office, and it's right at your fingertips. So I wanted to let you know that that is up and running, and we're quite excited. There are basically three topics that I just want to mention briefly. The first involves human trafficking. When I came into office, human trafficking really wasn't on the radar. It was never raised as an issue, you know, running for this particular job, and I think it was like week two, so January 2023, I was invited to an event hosted by Cape Cod Path, that's People Against Trafficking Humans. And it was essentially a presentation by a survivor. I had a coffee shop in Hyannis on a cold Tuesday night in January. So I show up, and there's about 20, 25 people in the room, and there's only one other gentleman. He is a strapping man in a blue uniform, is the chief of police from Orleans, his name is Scott McDonald. We listened to the survivor's speech, incredibly compelling, and a day or two later, I went down to the chief's office just to ask him, "What were you doing there?" And he explained to me that his goal was to launch a human trafficking task force within law enforcement across the Cape. He wanted every single police department to commit a law enforcement officer to this task force. I was inspired. I went back to my office, talked with some staffers, and we put together our own human trafficking task force of various civilians, and we started meeting quarterly, and we have representatives from the Independence House, Treasured Life, Cape Cod Path, Children's Cove, Health Imperatives, and our goal was to try to promote awareness as best as we could across the Cape and the Islands. We also set forth to work with our Cape delegation. I wish the senator was still... here, I know she has a lot of things she has to do. Um, but we were successful in working with our Cape delegation to get us a little extra funding, uh, to start a prosecution unit. Uh, we were able to approach, uh, a prosecutor in the Attorney General's Office up in Boston, her name is Vanessa Madge, to convince her to come down to the Cape to launch our prosecution human trafficking unit. Uh, she came down, I believe it was last summer. She began working with Danielle Whitney, who's our Director of Community Engagement Efforts, and they put together a grant, uh, that was offered on an annual basis through the MDEAA. Uh, the grant, the pot, if you will, was about a million dollars historically, and there are eleven DA's offices. The ceiling for the grant was a hundred thousand dollars. So you'd have these eleven DA's offices competing to get up to a hundred thousand dollars. That was until last year, when we applied for the first time ever, and the pot was cut to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So Danielle and Vanessa Madge got together, put together the best application we could, and at the end of the day, we walked out with ninety-seven thousand dollars. So we were quite proud of that. What did we do with the money? We took fifty thousand dollars and gave it to an outfit called My Life, My Choice. They work with teenagers and adolescent, uh, adolescent survivors of human trafficking. We gave another ten thousand dollars to the Independence House, who works with adult survivors of human trafficking, and the balance of which we used for various trainings for both law enforcement and people on our staff. Since then, we've gone on this tour across the Cape, again, to promote awareness. Uh, we've met with various stakeholders like Cape Cod Community College, the YMCA, Department of Children and Families, uh, Cape Cod Regional Transport Authority. And they've all been agreeable and accepting to help us promote by doing what? We created a QR code, there's a copy in the packet that I just gave out to you, and we ordered a thousand magnets that, I kid you not, literally arrived today. And the hope is, soon enough, you're gonna see these on the back of the, uh, seats on the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority buses, you're gonna see it on the back of certain bathroom stalls and restaurants across the Cape, and you're gonna see it, uh, on various websites with stakeholders that we've met. So we're quite excited about the efforts that we're making in both terms of promoting awareness and our prosecution efforts. Uh, I can indicate that last year, we, uh, jumped up, I believe it's thirty-seven percent, uh, the number of cases that we started prosecuting involving human trafficking. So that was one topic I wanted to talk about. The second one is involving, um, human rights and hate incidents. Um, I was able to hire a woman named Courtney Scalise. Courtney comes to us with a really unique background. Um, she was a prosecutor in New York City, uh, then she was a prosecutor in Guam, and then she was a prosecutor in Anarundale County, Maryland. Why all those places? Her husband is in the Coast Guard, so he moved around, she moved around. But when she came to us, we explained that, you know, we had some things going on in the Cape that were, um, we had some high-profile things that caught our attention, which made us do a deeper dive in, uh, in regards to hate incidents that were occurring. And some of you may remember, there was one here this past winter, uh, at a pond, uh, some, some things written in the ice of the pond. Um, but we've had other incidences, you probably well know, there was one not too long ago in Mashpee, uh, at the Reclamation Language, um, office for the Mashpee Wapinaw Tribe, some writings on the side of the wall there. We had an incident on Martha's Vineyard in Oak Bluffs where a white supremacy group tagged signs on top of a pole, uh, outside of black-owned businesses, uh, and we've had some other incidents across the Cape that have drawn attention. We've also had a number of, uh, hate incidences in our schools. So Courtney's been tasked with focusing, uh, on those particular cases as the chief of our human rights unit. And again, that's a new unit for our office. Um, the third topic that I just wanted to mention, uh, is in the area of community engagement. When I ran for this job, I would say there were two issues that resonated wherever I went. First had to do with mental health. Um, I talked about how we needed a mental health court here on the Cape, we were the only part, uh, only part of the state that didn't have a mental health court. And I must recognize, uh, Justice John Julian, the presiding justice in Barnstable, I believe it was last September formally, uh, they opened up a mental health court in Barnstable. So now we have that opportunity to bring professionals in the field and work with the struggling defendants to identify the core issue, and then, of course, treat the core issue. So we're really grateful for Judge Julian's efforts, uh, in launching that. And while it is in Barnstable, if there are cases that come up in Falmouth Court area, the Orleans Court area, they can be transferred to receive the same services in Barnstable. But getting back to community engagement, um, that was an area that, uh, a lot of people didn't know what the DA's office did for work, essentially, uh, and certainly didn't know many people in the district attorney's office. So I spoke about creating a new position called a Community Engagement Officer, um, and basically that person's exclusive responsibility was to be in our communities every single day. Uh, we've gone through the hiring process, and we hired a woman named Kelly Quealy. Uh, she's been, uh, Cape resident her whole life, uh, and she worked in the DA's office for about a dozen years or so. Uh, we did, uh, interview external candidates, probably about a dozen to fifteen, but at the end of the day, we went with someone who worked in the office and kinda understood certain things. Um, and her first task was to create, uh, we talked about a community coalition, we gave it a cute name called the DA and Us. And I come with an ask. Uh, we are creating these chap, or chapters of these DA and Us in every single town across the Cape, and one on each island. And depending on the town size, might be a half dozen people, might be up to a dozen folks. And we're gonna be meeting quarterly. And it's just a way for us to keep our finger on the pulse of what might be going on in any given community. Uh, one of the folks in our office keenly observed that when you look at Cape Cod from the satellite, you see one Cape Cod. But as we all know, living here, we have at least fifteen different Cape Cod's from the fifteen different towns, if not more so, because of all the different villages that make up each town. So this is our way to keep, like I said, the finger on the pulse. Having been in office now for a whopping seventeen months, um, I've already seen instances where like over here, we may have a, uh, a lot more fraud going on with the elderly, but over here, we have a lot more hate speeches going over here, the uptick in the opium crisis is increasing more in this particular community. So this is gonna allow us to supplement the efforts, if you will, of our law enforcement partners to try to figure out what's going in any of our towns. Um, those are the three topics, I told you three topics, but being a lawyer, I can't resist, one more. Um, you might remember, when I came here last year, I spoke briefly about the budget, my budget. Some of you that are here last year may remember, I drew a comparison to the Northwest DA's office, that's Hampshire County and Franklin County. They have an annual population that essentially mirrors ours, two hundred and sixty thousand. I've got about two sixty to two sixty-five between Barnstable Dukes and Nantucket County on an annual basis. Of course, our summer population is just beyond. But, um, so our population's about the same size. We have an extra district court compared to them. We have a higher criminal caseload compared to them. And in fiscal year twenty-three, when I took office, my budget was five and a half million. His was eight and a half million. So then you roll into fiscal year twenty-four, which we're in right now, and his actually grew by, to three point two million difference between his budget and my budget. So it's a little bit more lean year, more lean times this year as we're preparing for FY twenty-five. Um, but what my ask is gonna be, is I'm hoping to come back next fall with some specifics. We are going to be looking for stakeholders across the Cape and the islands to justify, yes, nearly a sixty percent budget. We want parity with what the Northwest District gets to offer their constituents. So I look forward to coming forward, uh, next fall with, again, specific requests. This is what we're looking for, and this is why we're asking for, asking for it, and we'd be looking for your endorsement on it. So thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Very informative. Oh, go ahead.
What can community members do to help with your, uh, both, uh, human trafficking and, uh, hate speech efforts?
So, um, I would ask that you contact Kelly Quealy, I believe her information might be on there, or you actually have this in your packets, you can scan it, you'll get to our website, Kelly Quealy is definitely on our website, please reach out to her. Um, and if you're interested in joining our, um, human task force, we'd be, we'd love to talk to you. Um, but if you wanted to also join our Community Engagement Coalition, we'd love to have some people on, on that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We'll see you in the fall. Okay, we're gonna go to business number two, discuss and vote on the reduction of the Veterans Center lease payment, and I'm gonna send that over to Mr. Renshaw, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, as you all recall, back in September of twenty twenty-one, uh, we had a competitive, uh, process, proposals process, uh, in which, after which, the town executed a lease agreements with the Joe Q Veterans Coffee Break Incorporated, uh, for the former senior center. Many of us, uh, attended the ribbon cutting at the, uh, Veterans Center, um, recently. Um, and as you all probably recall, the initial term of that lease agreement, uh, is five years, uh, which makes it expire August thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. Under the terms of the lease, uh, the town's responsible for the major repairs, electric service, heating system, the, the, the major systems of the building. And the, uh, Joe Q Citizens Coffee Break is responsible for maintenance and upkeep of the property. The lease includes a market rate rent, the current lease, of four thousand dollars per year, um, below-market rate lease, of four thousand dollars per year. And, uh, in a, in effect, it allows the town to kind of recover, uh, recapture a portion of the cost to meet, uh, those maintenance repair obligations, and to ensure the property. Madam Chair and Select Board, since twenty twenty-one, when this lease began, the group has undertaken a complete renovation, which you all witnessed firsthand, of the building, including a new roof, new bathrooms, which I understand were much-needed new bathroom renovations, uh, new heating, ventilating, and air conditioning system, new flooring, and installation, lastly, of a solar array, uh, that the group is very proud of. This is only a partial list of all of those accom- accomplishments, the great things that, uh, that they were able to improve upon. And, uh, as well witnessed, the quality of that workmanship is outstanding. All the work has been funded by a combination of grants, donations, and basically in-kind donations and services, labor. We don't really have an accurate, um, costing of the value of the improvements, the renovations, but we believe it's well in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. And Madam Chair and Select Board, that being the case, uh, we believe strongly that the value that's been added to the property far exceeds any amount in lease that we recover based upon the current terms of the, of the lease agreement. So Madam Chair and Select Board, I'm recommending that Select Board vote to amend the existing lease, again, which expires August thirty-first of twenty twenty-six, and that, uh, the Select Board move that the rent under the existing lease of three hundred Dillingham Avenue to the Joe Q Veterans Coffee Break be reduced from that four thousand dollars per year to one dollar per year.
I, I would be happy to move that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
Can we give them a refund?
Okay, Mr. Brown, go ahead.
My only comment would thank you, thanks to the town manager for taking a look at this and exploring it and coming to us with this recommendation. I think it was.
Team effort between Peter and Mr.
And Mr. Johnson Staub as well, uh, you know, certainly always wondered why, uh, the rent was or the lease had been set, but I understand the competitive process and so forth. So thanks for staying on top of it and, uh, appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
I think that's important to recognize that this did come out of the town manager's office. It didn't come from any other place. So, thank you for that. So we have, uh, motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Okay, request from the Falmouth Farmers Market, Inc. for a waiver reduction of the special event permit fee for the Falmouth Farmers Market at Marina Park on Thursdays from five-thirty twenty-four to seven-ten twenty-four. Do we have someone here to represent? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Close, I'm the president of the board.
Okay. And you have information in your packets? Does anyone have a question or a comment regarding this request?
The, the request is for a complete waiver, I think, uh, the suggestion is to go back to what we did last year, which was a nominal two hundred and ten dollars.
For the past seven years, Madam Chair, if I may, for the past seven years, uh, we, similar to what, how we've handled these in the past, I, I did kind of a historical look back, and for the past seven years, uh, Select Board has voted to, uh, reduce the special event permit fee to two hundred dollar base fee, uh, plus an additional five hundred dollar in-kind donation.
Correct.
Um, which is a great, a great concept. Um, and that five hundred dollar in-kind donation is basically to take care of the, uh, the garden area in front of the Harbor Masters office. So that would be my recommend, my recommendation.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Do you cancel the event on rainy days?
Um, very rainy days, and especially if there's thunder and lightning, um, light drizzle, no.
Okay, because, you know, we got the new policy of responsibility for the grounds, should there be damage, because we've been having some damage, so.
Yes.
I think we're aware of that.
I am, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Questions for the applicant? Or anyone like to?
I have no questions, I think it's great.
Move it?
I move approval. Motion to approve the reduction of the special event permit fee to a two hundred dollar permit fee and five hundred dollar in-kind donation for the care of the Harbor Masters Office Garden for the Falmouth Farmers Market at Marina Park, taking place on Thursdays from June sixth to October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, we vote to authorize the extension of a special temporary outdoor seating approvals of twenty twenty-three to April one, twenty twenty-four through April one, twenty twenty-five, those restaurants which had approved temporary outdoor dining licenses on March thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packets this evening is a copy of that, uh, memorandum or advisory, I should say, uh, from the governor's office, approving that act making appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to provide for supplementing certain existing appropriations and for certain other activities and projects. That, uh, was approved on May first, twenty twenty-four, uh, that advisory was, was issued. Um, it, basically, the advice within that advisory, um, had the effect of reducing to review and approval of such applications for outdoor alcoholic beverages table service would no longer be performed by the ABCC. Pretty drastic change. Um, all of the other types of alterations of premises, uh, applications would continue to be submitted through the, uh, ABCC. The act requires municipalities to take sole responsibility for the review and approval of those outdoor alcoholic beverage table service areas. A thorough review of the complex change to the procedures is recommended, uh, through town council's office. We've had some discussions with town council, and she's recommending that thorough review and, uh, and ongoing in Falmouth and other cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth. There's currently some discussion amongst the municipalities, uh, cities and towns in the Commonwealth about how the, um, how it's gonna be implemented, this change. And again, upon, uh, sitting down with town council and reviewing this with staff and town council, um, an extension available only to those existing license holders that have been approved for the temporary outdoor seating back in twenty twenty-three, and whose permit expired on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, uh, is being proposed. Madam Chair and Select Board, if approved, this authorization allows those entities, those businesses, to apply for continued use of previously approved outdoor seating areas. And, uh, the process, again, would follow the procedures for that act making appropriations, as I indicated earlier. Uh, so Madam Chair, I'm recommending that, um, the board, uh, approve the request to authorize this extension of the special temporary outdoor seating approvals of twenty twenty-three, extending that period of coverage to April first, twenty twenty-four, from April first, twenty twenty-four through April first of twenty twenty-five, so giving it basically a year extension, um, to those restaurants which had temporary, would have approved temporary outdoor dining licenses on March thirty-first. Basically, in effect, this is giving us a time to kind of sit down and develop those procedures, those review and, uh, and, and approval procedures.
And while we're doing that, to extend what they've already had.
Correct, correct.
Only for the ones that are licensed already for that.
That is correct.
So it sounds like the state is pushing the control to the local municipalities and[1670.33] saying, "We're not doing this anymore, but we're not ready to take it over, so we need the year." Correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Muscali?
And what happens, or what's the process that restaurants that weren't approved in March 2023 that want to have outdoor dining, do they go back to the AABC, or where does that stand?
It's my understanding, that's a great question, Madam Chair and Select Board member Muscali, we're currently working with town council to kind of, to develop those processes and procedures, but right now I don't have a great answer for you, unfortunately, for those new businesses.
I mean, certainly there have been a number of new businesses since then, so hopefully we can come up with some procedure which will allow them to do the same thing that the other ones are.
Certainly, and we're working on that now. We certainly wanted, our focus and our intent with this agenda item is to address those, I think, 11 businesses currently that are covered by, that have already been-
Already have it.
I have a question.
Go ahead. Mr. Zelinski, and then I'll go to Mr. Brown.
Just a question. Is there any extended liability over this one year? Do we assume any of that responsibility that the ABCC would have? No?
I don't believe there's any liability to the town in connection with-
Well, we're developing our monitor, because obviously, if we take it over, we're going to have to monitor it, right?
Even more broadly, you know, I don't believe the town has significant liability for liquor licenses. You know, if something terrible happens, it's, the liability's going to fall on the owner.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Brown?
What is the, why can't we just say, "We're going to extend the outdoor dining until further notice"? What do we have to do that creates this additional work for us? Because it was really already delineated and approved, and they've already got them all set up.
So what we're, I'm going to try to answer that question the best way I can. What we're looking at and what we're sitting down with town council right now and staff that basically processes these applications is we're looking to, in effect, mirror the process. I mean, there's a standard form, which you've all seen in your packets in the past. We're looking to kind of duplicate or mirror that former process that was under the auspices of ABCC. So it's going to look very similar. We just don't have that mechanism in place yet, so this is going to give us a little bit of time to work out the mechanics of it all.
Will those always have to be renewed annually, then? Is that my five-year license?
I don't know the answer to that question. I have to get back to the board. I don't know if it's going to be an annual. Do you happen to know, Peter?
I would think, once the premise is approved, this is conjecture, but I think, given the change in the regulations, that it would become part of the premise and it would be renewed as part of the liquor license renewal. But that's definitely a question we want to confer with legal counsel on and make sure that we understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Goldstone?
I'm just curious if you could give us a sense of the number of new requests pending and what the timeline might be, might be on developing that process.
That's a great question. So Chair and Select Board Member Goldstone, so it's a small number? Do you, I talked, I talked to front office staff about what they anticipated, and I think it's a very small number. We don't see a lot of these new requests. Do you happen to-
I don't have a number, but I think it would be new businesses, and then beyond that, it's hard to predict, because we've, you know, for, what, three, four years now, these opportunities have been ongoing, and those who wanted it have gotten them. So I don't know of a queue of additional, other than potentially new businesses.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd move town manager's request as described in his presentation.
Second.
Okay, I think for the record, we should read the motion, and I'm happy to do that. Motion to approve the request to authorize the extension of the special temporary outdoor seating approvals of 2023 to April 1, 2024 through April 1, 2025, to those restaurants which had approved temporary outdoors dining licenses on March 31, 2024. Mr. Zelinski moved the motion. Mr. Muscali seconded it. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, we are going to move into business number five. Discuss and vote to establish a task force 2026 for the planning and coordination of the nation's 250th anniversary, and I believe we have a presentation, and we have slated you for 10 minutes. Madam Chair and the board of selectmen, and thank you to the town planner for giving us some time here tonight to talk to you about a subject that we think is very important coming up. And with your permission, I would like to also introduce Tom Ripley, who is an advisor to the 250th commemoration in Boston and in Concord. So Bob, you'll be giving part of this presentation as well. We've prepared a PowerPoint presentation for you, and a few of us have been meeting with the concerns of what might be done for the 250th anniversary celebration. This is really huge. Those of you who are married, you know how important anniversaries are, because if you forget one, you're going to be reminded for a very long time. So we don't want to forget this, and we want to keep it in the forefront of our minds. We've prepared this, myself, Robert Ripley, the anniversary advisor, Tamsin George, who's here tonight, and Paul Dryer, Falmouth Planning Board, also here tonight. And I'm in control of the slides. So the patriotic celebration that we have had, it was the 300th anniversary, that was the tricentennial in 1986. It was a wonderful event. It was chaired by Trudy Vos at that time. We did some wonderful, we had some wonderful opportunities to do some very remarkable things. One was the continuing of the bike path. We also had the statue for Catherine Lee Bates. There were just a number of activities. The 200th anniversary, which I had the honor of being a part of the bicentennial committee, was a very important time for our town and for the nation. And again, we did some very wonderful contributions here as well. And so for the bicentennial, we had the opportunity to go up to the State House then under the governorship of Governor Dukakis and have Catherine Lee Bates Day in the Commonwealth of August 12th. That was pretty special for the town. And moving right along, the 150th anniversary of the railways in Falmouth, we had recognition of that. Also, the annual July 4th fireworks extravaganza now into its 44th year, and I'm happy to be a part of the committee, for the fireworks committee. We have talked with Steve Pelkey, who is the CEO of Atlas Pyrotech, and we have a tremendous plan in place and show in place for 2026. We've talked to the police chief and the fire department, so we have a lot of the concerns that you would have, concerns of ours, have been addressed. Also, the 250th now coming up in 2026, something that we hope you will embrace. It's a wonderful opportunity to bring the town together, bring the communities together, bring people together. We're always talking about inclusiveness, and this is a moment for that. Bob is going to address a few of the concerns that you might have about and interest in the economy, what it'll do for the town, and I'll go to the next slide.
Let me first say, as treasurer of Joe Q, thank you, Mr. Renshaw. That will help our pocketbook there. Okay, so I noticed a anniversary advisor. Okay, so I cannot offer any advice to anyone on that, but I do serve at the, on the Mass Historical Society in Boston. I'm chair of the 250th there, Concord Historical, which is my day job. We're working on it. I'm the chief operating officer there. And then our local museum on the greens, I'm the treasurer there too. So I guess people trust we went money, which is good. And you'll see Dennis Yamath there, which has been working and working this, but I think it's really an opportunity. If we look back at 1976, in 1976, there was about a million people that visited Concord. President Ford actually, at the time, came to visit. For this event in 2025, as Boston is expecting upwards of 10 million visitors, and Concord, Lexington expecting over a million. And so we kind of look at that trickle-down and say, "We would want to get part of that." So it's many of these organizations, for example, what we're doing at the, in Boston, is we're looking actually to build a visitor center to really be able to capture some of this business. The Concord Museum, we're looking to do actually about an 18-month program. It's interesting, as for us, you know, really, for Massachusetts, 2025 is the big year. For Philadelphia, 2026 is the big year. So we get a year's jump on them. But one of the things, if you look at and say the trickle-down effect, is, you know, what this will do for the Cape and what this will do for, really, for our town, which is most important. So if you think about it, if a million visitors are going to come to Concord, if we could get 100,000 visitors, now, I know what you're saying, the infrastructure, but, you know, we really want to be able to capture that, which I think is on the next slide.
Well, that's been changed around a bit.
That's Karen's beautiful artwork.
We'll get back to that.
So again, increases tourism to Falmouth and Woods Hole, increases Falmouth room and meals tax revenue, increases hotel and room rentals in Falmouth. Again, it really is a trickle-down effect, and this is an opportunity to how we're going to do it. And, you know, it's a lot of planning. I mean, when we look at, you know, some of the organizations, Mass Historical Society, we've been working on it for about a year now, really trying to raise $20 million at Concord. Our goal is to raise a million dollars there to really be able to do that. Lexington is the next town over. We don't talk about them, except that they are working away, because we all know where the shot heard around the world happened. It happened on the other side of the bridge in Concord, but some would debate that. But again, we want Falmouth to really be part of this in terms of, you know, it's not going to happen for another 50 years, and, you know, we'd really like to really plan how our, our community can really benefit from all of this. So, thank you.
We have one more slide. You're going to address this one?
Are you?
Yeah, that's yours.
Okay, wonderful artwork, Lexington and Concord. Again, you'll see the bridge there. And, you know, this is something that, you know, as we've been looking at really ways to, you know, really bring this front and center, is, you know, Concord 250th. One of the things we're doing up in Concord is they're really expecting, you know, again, the visitors, and we're, we see that Concord 250th, we're actually getting a lot of t-shirts and hats and, you know, really promoting it. So we really need to change that and say, "Falmouth 250." Really start to promote Falmouth, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. So, again, as Bob said, you know, this is something that is happening in our lifetime. How special is that? I mean, to be a part of something so significant is a milestone, but it's a marking point for the country, and it's something going forward that we can pass on to future generations. So some of the things that this group, task force, would be working with is to design a specific logo, as other towns have done. We have one for the nation. We have one for the state of Massachusetts. There are several other towns that have already developed their logos, so that would be very important. To develop a comprehensive, a comprehensive plan for celebrating the 250th anniversary, identifying funds that would be needed and potential funding sources, coordinate with the Falmouth Schools, Falmouth School District, and local historical societies, to provide opportunities for citizens and organizations to participate in events. And again, I think to bring the town together, it's a wonderful way to extend for the children, for the schools, of all levels of the schools, and just make them a little more aware of our history and how important it is to be a part of history. We have an opportunity to be making history, not only reflecting on the past, but making history. Conduct public meetings and additional input from Falmouth residents to coordinate the town's events with local, state, regional, and federal levels, and consider a plan for a potential permanent memorial in town. That was one of the things that was done during the tricentennial. We had the wonderful statue that was created in front of the library lawn of Catherine Lee Bates, and it's something significant to be left behind. Go to the next slide. So a working group, is that not the right one? Well, the working, the working group communications to provide updates to the town manager on a monthly basis, to provide input to the Falmouth enterprise with periodical, periodical public awareness, to coordinate and propose events with the police department for safety, prepare a final report of activities before December 31st of 2025, and request to the Select Board to endorse the concept of a 250th anniversary celebration in Falmouth, and establish a working group, a task force, as it was being termed, and appoint members. Recommend additional working groups, activities as desired, and propose participation of town personnel and others as appropriate. Evaluate proposed funding support as necessary, as needed. One of the things we'd like to bring back is a reorganization of the Falmouth militia. And also, you see the Battle of Falmouth up there, that was a commission during 1986. We'd like to have another reenactment of the Battle of Falmouth again. And we have a group of people who have expressed interest in being a part of this, so I don't think it'll be any effort to round up some qualified people, but several of them are here tonight. And I'm just going to go through very quickly. We have the Falmouth Historical Commission with Tamsin George, Falmouth Historical Society, Rachel Lovett could not be here, Falmouth Public Library, Brian Stokes, the Falmouth Public Schools District, Lori Dur, Woods Hole Historical Museum, Sarah Puccini, myself, Karen Ronaldo, the 250th anniversary advisor, Robert Ripley, Chamber of Commerce, Michael Casparian, military historian, Kevin Doyle is here. Would love to have a hand at the forming of a militia and bringing back the Battle of Falmouth. And Falmouth Planning Board, Paul Dryer. We'd also be hopeful that you would have a Select Board member of your choosing. Again, I'm very passionate about this event. I think it would be a very worthwhile and memorable and beneficial experience for the town and people coming to the town, and the tentacles that would go out. It's just endless possibilities, opportunities, and we hope that we've inspired you with our presentation and that you vote for something like this for 2026. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Renshaw. I see that they have proposed a group of people. I think we need to talk about that, and, and also the difference between a task force and a committee. So, Mr. Renshaw.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Karen, for the presentation.
Thank you.
So I've scaled back my comments. We'll kind of get this back, back on the timeline. So, so as you heard tonight, many of the towns on Cape have already formed these citizen committees, task force groups, to begin the planning process. As you all know, I'm hyper-competitive, and I don't want to be the only community on Cape that does not have one of these, and I want ours to be the best, our celebration in 18 months. What I'm proposing tonight, Madam Chair and Select Board, is the creation of a task force. We'll call it Task Force 2026 for the planning and coordination of the nation's 250th anniversary. And I'm proposing it be comprised of a seven-member group of individuals appointed by the Select Board in accordance with the board's already existing appointment policy. You have a copy of that policy, I believe, attached to your packets tonight. The task force would be responsible, as you heard earlier, for developing that comprehensive plan for the 250th anniversary celebration and including identifying potential grant funding opportunities. Again, that policy that's attached was originally developed by the Select Board back in 1993. We amended it in 2011, and it outlines in very specific terms that process whereby we advertise for the vacancies. Select Board interviews candidates based upon their qualifications, and then the Select Board makes those appointments. So that's the difference, in my mind, between a true working group and a task force or a committee. I'm proposing it a task force because it's got a certain start date and a, and a time-certain end date. And I'm proposing that start date be effective to creation of the task force tonight, if the, if the Select Board chooses to approve this, and an end date of July 15th, 2026. That's the specific beginning date and end date. And that July 15th, 2026 would allow a final report out from the group to the Select Board on the activities. And I'd also recommend, you know, quarterly perhaps, or semi-quarterly, updates and reports to the Select Board versus coming through my office in a working group environment. Importantly, if the Select Board decides to approve this concept and create this task force, I'm recommending the group be asked to draft a mission statement or a charge in consultation with my office as its first order of business, similar to how we've done these other committees and groups. The mission statement and charge would be brought back via the Select Board for approval at a subsequent meeting. Depending how quickly we can get that group, the core group kind of organized, time is of the essence, so perhaps it's as early as the June 17th meeting. But certainly, we'll bring that mission statement and charge back to you for approval.
So we could get the advertisement out fairly quickly?
We're going to, we're going to turn that around as quickly as we can, pending the outcome of tonight's, tonight's vote. So again, I'm recommending the, the Select Board motion and vote to create this task force 2026 for the planning and coordination of the nation's 250th anniversary as presented, and then to allow us to properly advertise for applications.
Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Zelinski, did you have something?
No, it's a great idea. Did I hear you say that you recommend seven people? Because this list has 11.
Yeah, I'm recommending seven. I think keeping the group tight. I know Karen and the group kind of put their presentation together a bit independently. Clearly, Select Board's decision, I'm recommending a seven-member board, because I think it just makes it a little tighter, and the communication flows a little bit better, but whatever the board decides.
Mr., I'll go with Mr. Muscali, and then I'll get to Ms. Goldstone.
Mike, I, we heard and I assume that there will also be some need for town employees to be involved in this, I think, as far as support and so forth. I mean, is that something that you see as a, as an issue going forward?
So quite honestly, Madam Chair and the Select Board Member Muscali, I'm going to, quite honestly, try to limit that staff involvement to the extent that I can, because as you all know, we're lean and mean. as you all know, we're lean and mean. Our staffing sometimes is a challenge. You know, certainly, my office would be involved in, in some of that support. But, quite honestly, I'm gonna try to minimize the extent that the staff are leaned on.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, two, and I'll start with one that, sorry, allergies, I think, but that builds on Mr. Muscally's question, which is what would this body's responsibility be in response to this task force? And then also, I was interested in the end date of July 15th, right in the middle of the celebratory year. What would happen for the remainder of 2026?
So, it, my, I envision Select Board's role in this is basically to, to take, again, reports, periodic reports from the group in terms of what they're recommending, in terms of the, you know, potential grant funding, seeking those opportunities. Karen had mentioned some, some, you know, kind of long-term monuments and whatnot. Whatever that group kind of proposes, I kind of want this, I want that information to come before the Select Board, to have that kind of role in decision and kind of sifting through that and deciding, you know, what's in the community's best interest. And I'm sorry, the, the second portion of the question.
Why would the task force end on July 15th, 2026, in the middle of the celebration year?
So, so I, so I picked, I, I kind of envisioned, again, July 4th. We can certainly chain, alter that, you know. That was just a date. I thought it was important as part of my, our proposal, to have a specific start date and end date. I picked July 15th because it was sometime after what I considered the July 4th type celebration. But you're, you're right. I mean, it is kind of smack in the middle of, of what's gonna be a larger celebration, perhaps. But I saw that July 4th of 2026 as being kind of the zenith of, of those celebrations. And then that gives a week and a week and a half to kind of report out in a, in a future Select Board meeting, some of the activities, a final report.
This group may make another suggestion in terms of the, the end date. So, it's a good, very good question. Any other, Mr. Brown?
I'm kind of concerned about the reduction in the number of people. This group has organized this pretty much on their own, and they've taken the initiative to bring this to us. I would consider, I hope we would consider keeping the full complement of volunteers.
Madam Chair, if I might?
Yes.
So, you know, I don't have a strong opinion on it, but just bearing in mind for, for the group, that whatever the size of the group is, a quorum is a majority of that group. So, you know, if you pick 11, you have to have six people to hold a meeting. And, of course, if you, whatever the number is that the Board decides on, there can always be more people at the meetings who are not members, and there can be more people participating in the activities that are not members. So, just for the Board's consideration.
I have one other question.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Is it really essential that this be actually a town committee? Because perhaps a, just a group of organized citizens could be more effective and less restricted by those forum issues.
So, so I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
So, so my, my, my instant reaction to that, I, I tried to, we, we did, I had a chance to meet with Karen and the group a couple of times, Mr. Paul, who's in the audience as well. And we kind of, and, and, to their credit, they, they got me excited about the concept. And, and part of that pitch, so to speak, was some examples of other communities and how they're kind of handling it. And I was really kind of intrigued by the task force, citizen committee, rather than just having a, a more loosely-based kind of grassroots effort, having it be a Select Board-appointed body. I thought it gave it a little bit more.
I think it has to be a town committee, because I think in order, if they were doing it on their own, they may not get the support from us that they need, because they wouldn't need it. But I think they will need some backing and support to pull this off. I think it's a great idea. I love it. Go ahead, Mrs. Zelinski.
No, no, that's forgiven.
So, I think tonight, I'm hoping that we're gonna move the idea of it and have them come back to us with a mission statement, a vision, and then the recommendation on the number. Go ahead.
I think by sheer virtue of the fact that part of their presentation recommended or asked for a member of the Select Board to be part of that group to bring back and forth the, some of the dialogue and procedures and asks. And I think that's an ask on their end, that they want us to participate at some level. By asking, you, part of what you asked was, what's our participation? Was one of us will be the one that runs back and forth with their new ideas and asks for help? That's the way I.
Absolutely. And we'll attend the meetings and be part of it. And we can, if anyone is interested in, in doing that, we, if you would let me know, and, at our next meeting, we can appoint, we can, we can appoint.
And is this something that this group is amenable to, this type of committee formation? Just curious if it's.
I think Mr. Mr. Renshaw has met with them. Is that correct, that they are, they're on board with the task force and how you would like to see it managed?
We, we have had those discussions. And I think, you know, their choice of the, the term working group was perhaps just based upon their understanding of how the process worked. But I think everybody's comfortable. I did have a chance, just part of tonight's meeting, to talk about the task force recommendation and allowing Select Board to choose those folks. They took the next step and kind of listed some folks that, I believe, talking to Karen, had expressed some interest in serving. But certainly, I think, you know, what I'm proposing, I just feel it's a stronger, having Select Board kind of hear the applications and interview, kind of following that same process.
Like we do with every other.
I think we do for other.
Could we consider keeping it flexible when we advertise, make it between seven and 11? Or do you think seven is really a hard and firm number?
Why don't, why don't we compromise and go that for nine?
And/or alternates? You know, I think there are ways to do that. I don't know that we have to decide that right this minute, but what I, what I would hope that the Board would do is, is move it.
Yeah. You asking for that motion?
I would, I, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to create the Task Force 2026 for the planning and coordination of the nation's 250th anniversary as presented to properly, properly advertise the applications.
I have a motion. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the Board?
Can I just clarify?
Yes.
We're moving the broad idea to approve a task force, not the number or composition.
And to move forward.
Or the end date, or any of those specifics. Thank you.
Anything else from the Board? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. I think it's an awesome idea.
Thank you all for bringing that forward.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Ripley, if you could wear a tie the next time you come, I'd appreciate it as well.
I'm not sure what that's about. Okay, so we will move into, discuss and approve, and vote to approve an entertainment regulation and amendments to the special events use policy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One clarification point. I had a conversation with Town Council earlier this afternoon in regards to the entertainment regulation portion of this item. And I wanted Select Board to understand that what I'm gonna be requesting is for discussion only on the proposed entertainment regulation, which you have a copy included in your packet. Town Council reminded me that a public hearing is required for the formal adoption of a regulation versus a policy. Select Board can, can adopt a policy without a, a hearing. But since this is an entertainment regulation, Town Council wisely conferred with me and, and reminded me that we need a hearing on that. So, 30 days must elapse before, between the, period, between the notice in the paper of the hearing and once Select Board hears it. So, I'm anticipating that hearing being set on the July 15th meeting date, because that would be, allow us that 30 days. So, again, my point is, I'm not asking Select Board tonight to vote to approve the entertainment regulation. It's just for discussion purposes. I am gonna be asking you to vote and approve the special events use policy, as it's been revised. Madam Chair and Select Board, due to an increasing number of complaints that have been filed with the town manager's office, you know, certainly my first summer with regards to unreasonable noise emanating from businesses licensed, licensed to conduct outdoor entertainment, my office has been working for the past several months with Town Council to develop a new entertainment regulation. If you recall, last fall, I circulated with Town Council's assistants a list of seven or eight questions for Select Board to answer in terms of kind of the policy-level decisions, what you wanted to see, how you wanted to see entertainment, outdoor entertainment regulated. We, Select Board had a discussion with the Assistant Town Manager and I during the most recent working, work group study session, where we talked about this. It was on the agenda. The regulations, the entertainment regulations, I feel, offer some additional specificity with regards to restrictions that would be placed upon businesses that engage in entertainment activities, again, including the outdoor music, whether it be amplified or not, or non-amplified, and would allow some enhanced enforceability of violations when complaints are made. As you recall, last summer, I think we all were inundated with a lot of those email complaints with regards to, they had a lot of attachments, the, the audio files.
Mm-hmm.
My concern is that without very specific entertainment regulations, that kind of outline the do's and the don'ts, what we can and cannot do, we don't have, it's not easily enforceable. So, my discussion with Town Council was, give us a set of draft regulations that would allow us to more easily enforce violations. I want to draw, with regards to the entertainment regulations, again, which are included in your packet, and these are all new, obviously. We have nothing, no existing documentation that kind of memorializes or documents those, what would be a violation or those regulations. I want to draw Select Board's attention specifically to item seven concerning speakers and amplification. And I'll read it real quickly. Any speakers or amplification, this is proposed, any speakers or amplification systems must be directed towards the interior of the property. Noise shall not be audible to a reasonable person beyond the property line of the licensed premises. This is a little bit of a weak link in the chain, because it has that reasonable person definition, but that's basically based upon the noise bylaw that we currently have in place. We're working on a new noise bylaw for November Town Meeting. I won't go into all of those details, but it's gonna be a little bit more objective and quantitative in terms of decibel readings versus what a reasonable person considers to be excessive. The other item I would bring Select Board's attention to within the entertainment regulation proposed is item number eight. Again, very specifically stating that the, any noise from outdoor entertainment must be contained within the property lines or license shall not be issued. And lastly, and I think importantly, when I remember having this discussion with Select Board at the, at the study session, was putting the onus on the applicant to notify abutters of, of this entertainment license application. Currently, the town manager's office, Select Board Office, issues those letters to the abutters, encourages the costs associated with advertising the paper for the public hearing. So, it's, it's our recommendation included in item nine of these proposed entertainment regulations, that the applicant bear that responsibility to notify abutters. And again, required to publish the notice of the hearing in the local paper. So, those are three of the kind of key elements within that entertainment regulation. Moving on, and I'll answer questions, obviously, after I'm through here, but moving on to the special events use, the amendments to that existing special events use documents are really in, in, intended to provide a connection, a nexus, as you see in the first paragraph. It adds the, the entertainment license, or I'm sorry, yes, the, the policy outlines the administrative review of entertainment licenses. So, it connects what would be this proposed entertainment regulation to our existing special events use and entertainment license policy. And importantly, I think, under item three of this amended special events use policy, it includes specific categories where, which would require a public hearing. Town Manager's Office would review the applications and make a decision based upon, if adopted, these very specific elements, alcohol being served, live music being performed, entry fees being required, close proximity to residential area, or traffic likely to be impacted, those quality of life issues that impact sometimes our neighborhoods. And then lastly, any additional or individual criteria that, in the discretion of the town manager, would necessitate a public hearing, again, based upon the impact on quality of life in a neighborhood. So, unlike what we currently have today, we don't have a document that basically outlines and, and enforces an application into the public hearing arena. And I think this document, this ad under item three of the draft policy would certainly do that. And it allows applicants to know exactly what's gonna be required in terms of a public hearing or not. Applications that don't meet these proposed standards or criteria would still require an entertainment license, and they would be referred to the Select Board, but they would be approved administratively. Those licenses would be approved administratively without a, a public hearing, in the additional steps of advertising and, and conducting that public hearing. And again, in administrative approval, it's Select Board's discretion. The applicant wouldn't be required to appear for any of the license, for the, for the license that would be issued. So, with that, I'll stop and answer any questions you might have.
So, what I would like to do, if the Board is in agreement, is I'd like to break this in half. Can we go to the special events use policy first? Because that is something you're looking for us to discuss and vote. Am I correct?
That is the, the one document tonight that I'm asking for a vote.
So, if people could start, you've all had it, so I'm sure you've read it. And do you have any questions on the additions, changes made in red for Mr. Renshaw? Go ahead, Mr. Muscally.
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw, and I appreciate the connectivity of the regulation and the policy. And I realize that the regulation needs a certain period of time before it can be adopted, public hearing and so forth. And a policy does not require that. Nonetheless, I would be more in favor of waiting until the regulation and the policy and voting on the same, both of them at, at the same time. The, the people who are out there in the community have not seen this policy, I don't think. I mean, maybe they saw it when the packet was posted, but there's been real no opportunity for people to review it and comment. And I, I think that unless there's a time constraint or urgency that, that you feel is, is, is necessary, I'd prefer to hold it and deal with it at the same time that we deal with the regulation.
How much public comment do we take on policy? I'm just.
I mean, I, I don't know, but I certainly think that it's, it's appropriate for, for comment.
I.
I have a question.
Mr. Brown?
So, we have some existing restaurants, for instance, that have outdoor televisions in their courtyard areas. Will those be pre-existing, non-conforming, if they're not set up correctly? I'll have to think about that one.
Well, we would, yeah.
I mean, we're not changing, this is just the, the special event policy, right? So, we're not talking about the annual entertainment licenses.
Oh, okay.
Special events.
Yep.
So, one other question then, for the public property. We're gonna have some that we know are gonna transfer beyond the property line. Are we gonna, like, specifically outline in those instances what we are expecting? Because, like, say, for instance, concerts at the Marina Band Shell certainly go beyond the property line, and we know it's something that everyone's gotten used to. We're probably gonna have to pick a few and say there are exceptions?
With, by, by specific conditions and outlining exactly what that would be. Again, my, my intent is to make sure that we can enforce whatever is approved with regards to these special events. So, I think that could be probably conditioned, no specific language.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Isn't this to add uniformity to, across the board, so we have some kind of baseline on special events? Is that the purpose?
Well, so, so, less, in my opinion, uniformity, more about, again, making that connection between these, the, the, the special events and some of these outdoor entertainment, the ones that have the greater impact, perhaps, on the qual, I keep using the word, the term quality of life. That's really about it. So, it's, since we don't have anything right now that ties those two together, I think, you know, standardization and the uniformity will be a result of it. But again, I'm really, my real intent is, having gone through the summer, and look, most, most folks are good actors. I'm just trying to really be able to have an enforceable policy practice in place that allows us to, for those that aren't, are, are, are bad actors, that we can, that we can take some action.
Just, one.
Mr. Brown?
Are you waiting? I'm sorry. Just wanna make sure we have some kind of flexibility, because we don't wanna approve events like at the fairgrounds. We know that travels beyond the property line, when we have the bands for badges, for instance, and the one at the, a couple of the ones that are at the band shell. And if we have a really super strict policy, then some aggrieved resident might say, hey, you're violating your own policy, and, you know, could, could backfire a little bit that way. I agree with the, the whole package of it. I just wonder if there should be some language added to say, unless specifically approved per event, or something like that.
And, and Madam Chair, if I could really, and I'm gonna be candid. So, I, I mentioned Town Council. town council, and I had a discussion this afternoon with regards to the requirement for the public hearing. There is no times, time sensitivity with regards to the approval. We've been, staff has been working on this, these two documents for, for months. Going into the summer was my goal, to have something in place, so I guess, you know, pumping the brakes a bit, hitting pause, and, and allowing not only select board an opportunity to look at the language, but also the public, I certainly, I, I think that's fair because it's important that we get it right, and, and, and again, I, when we drafted the language and, and we looked at other communities and we, we tried to, you know, identify what worked in other communities, what we thought, and, and, and quite honestly, seven C, noise shall be, shall not be audible to a person, a reasonable person beyond the property line, that's pretty onerous. So, if that's something that we want to try to soften with some, some suggested revisions, I'd certainly be supportive of that.
Thank you. Could be as simple as without specific authorization, parameters, or something like that.
So, am I hearing that the board would like to table this for now and, and bring it back on the seventeenth?
Unless there's a problem, didn't you want to say?
Did you have a question?
No. Go right ahead.
No. But we would not be able to, at that point, have a public hearing on the first part, am I correct, on the regulation piece?
So, if, if, if the board wants to postpone table this, again, to meet that 30-day requirement, I'm told that, and I looked at the calendar, the July, the July 17th meeting would be the, would be the meeting that would bring conceivably both of them back.
And that would be?
The public hearing would be on the entertainment regulation piece, and then hopefully by that time, there'd be some comments, perhaps, individual conversations with, between constituents and select board members as far as how to, you know, again, revise and amend. This is just draft language.
And then going off what Mr. Muscally said, sort of tailor the, the policy around the regulation, is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
And that's July 15th, actually, will be our next, that, that.
Thank you, that is, that is correct, those I missed.
So, is that what the board would like to do?
I'm flexible either way, I mean, in keeping with thinking that this is town property, these are special events on town property, it's not businesses that we're regulating, so it's not as if we're really imposing anything on anyone that's, that's not expecting it, and most of the events for this summer are already promised, so this is sort of a retroactive rider. I mean, personally, I would be okay with approving this as long as we have some flexibility, and I would leave that to discretion of the town manager to add the language for specific approval of events that may transcend beyond the property line, but I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm flexible with either way, if you want to wait.
So, is, I, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Brown, so it sounds like you would be okay with moving that second piece on the policy and holding on the regulation, correct?
I would be.
Okay. So, is that a motion?
Um, is everybody else done talking?
I'm, I'm, if, may I?
Go ahead.
I, I'm more attuned to giving us a little more, if, if it's not timed, time sensitive, Bob's got a great idea to tie this all up in one, but, but there's some people that, my, some of my constituents that I know would appreciate the fact that we could talk about this in more greater, in greater detail. If it's, if it's not time sensitive, I think there's no reason not to wait till the next one, if, if the agenda allows it.
And, and I would say that, that establishing the regulation and then building your policy from there makes sense.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so, I guess we will vote to table this until July 15th. Can someone?
I'll make a motion to table this item till July 15th.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board, hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you for your work on this, Mr. Renshaw. I know it's been a lot.
You didn't get your chance.
Okay, we are going to...
It was hard, the first meeting.
What, what is happening?
She wanted to say, Heather wanted the second, and then I...
You got to jump right in there.
Pick a good one, Heather, and then you have the first one.
And also, please, because you're way down there, please make sure I see you.
Yes.
Okay, we are going to move into approve application for a change of hours of a seasonal all-alcoholic beverages license, 71 Water Street, Inc., doing business as the Woods Hole Wharf located 71 Water Street, Woods Hole. Mr. Renshaw, I'm going to send that over to you, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll just preface, I know the applicant is here tonight, aye. So, I'll just, a couple of comments, the application was filed back on May 20th, 71 Walker Street Incorporated, which is doing business as Woods Hole Wharf, submitted a letter and application for a change of hours of a seasonal all-alcoholic beverages license. The current business hours, as is indicated in your packet, are 11:00 a.m. through 1:00 a.m. Mondays through Saturday and 12:00 p.m. through 1:00 a.m. on Sundays. Madam Chair and Board, the applicant's requesting to operate from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. every day, Monday through Sunday. The applicant states that the purpose of the request is to facilitate the operation of a breakfast service, which they feel would complement, because there is basically a lack of breakfast services in the Woods Hole area. Madam Chair and Board, the police department, fire, rescue, and the building department have reviewed the application, as you can see in your packet, and they have no issues or concerns with its, with its approval. I would note, importantly, and this just came up in discussion that I had with the front office staff, that per MGL 138, section 33, alcohol cannot be served on Sundays prior to 10:00 a.m., so I just wanted the select board to know that the applicant's request is to go from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Mondays through Sundays. Importantly, depending, if the board approves this tonight, I, I think it's going to be important that we make that distinction or exception, that on Sundays, it can only be from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m.
Any questions of the applicant?
No, I was just informed about the 10:00 a.m., and that was just a mistake on our part, so we are, know about that.
Okay. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, seems like a simple request.
Certainly is needed in Woods Hole.
I'm going to be quiet, I'll let Heather go do her thing right now.
Okay. Does someone want to make a mo, do you want to make a motion?
Motion to approve the application for a change of hours of a seasonal all-alcoholic beverages license, 71 Water Street, DBA, the Woods Hole Wharf located at 71 Water Street, Woods Hole, as, no, amended to 10:00 a.m. on Sundays.
I'll second Ms. Goldstone's motion.
Perfect, okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion amongst the board, hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Take care. Okay, we're going to move, ah, you're going to push me right over the edge, okay. We are going to move into number eight, approve application for new lodging house license, Woods Hole Passage, 186 Woods Hole Road. Any questions about that?
Nope, it's a pretty clear explanation, it's just a little, just missed the date.
You can just introduce yourself?
I'm Ms. Liza Fox, I'm the owner of Woods Hole Passage, and...
Okay. Any questions of the applicant?
No, it just seems pretty simple.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
So moved? I would move approval, is there a specific motion here?
Motion to approve the application for a new lodging house license, Woods Hole Passage, 186 Woods Hole Road, as presented.
Sounds good, I'll second your motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number nine. We, request for a variance to the sign code 184-18C, measurement of sign area, and section 184-25, B3 freestanding signs, Aldi, 39 Davis Straits, Falmouth, and I'm going to kick this over to Mr. Renshaw, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll just kind of preface again and keep my comments brief. Included in your packet is kind of a, an explanation, Aldi is applied for four signs. These signs would be located in the B2, or are located, to be located in the B2 zoning district. They're all in a separate parcel of land, but are next to the Falmouth Plaza, which has, as you know, Staples, Petco, Planet Fitness, Dollar Tree, and a few other stores. I'm not going to go through, Madam Chair, each of the signs, but I, I want to be clear, and will allow the applicant, obviously, to present the information he's brought this evening. My recommendation to select board is that we support the recommendation of the building department and that the select board require the applicant to reduce the size of their signs to meet the bylaw, so that'd be my recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw, and you're the applicant?
Yes, good evening, thank you. For the record, my name is Heather Duttco, and I'm a sign permit consultant with National Sign, who is the installer for Aldi, and we have...
I'm Rich Service, I'm the director of real estate for Aldi, so thank you for having, having us here.
Okay, thank you.
Peter, thanks for turning up the AC.
So, we are before the board tonight to request a variance for the proposed signage for, for Aldi, and as explained, the signage does not meet the, the bylaw for size, so we would just like to present it for consideration from the board and just give you a little overview of how they came up with this sign proposal, and we can just take it from there. So, there are two wall signs proposed on the building. The building, as you know, is the former Christmas tree shop, and they are remodeling the building, it has about 180-foot frontage and a setback approximately 350 feet from Route 28. The front facade, I measured at about 4,300 square feet, give or take, the, the square footage of the front facade?
180.
Well, 180-foot long, yeah, and maybe about 43 or 4400 square foot for the frontage. There was an existing Christmas tree shop sign there at approximately 240 square foot. There is an existing Christmas tree shop pylon sign in the center of the parking lot, and there is an existing Christmas tree directional sign at the curb cut at the entrance, so those were the existing signage for Christmas tree. So, Aldi is proposing to, of course, remove all of that signage, and then the first two signs would be the wall signs, sign number one and sign number two, internally illuminated sign boxes on the front facade and on the side facade, and as we understand it, it does not meet the code for the square footage, which was at 120, 75 is allowed, and we were also told that the three foot, this three foot height clause in the bylaw that we, we felt only applies to channel letters, but we are told that it does apply to wall signage as well, so we would see the overall height of the sign. The second sign would be, this is the existing sign in the parking lot, that would be removed, and they're requesting a monument sign at the, towards the entrance, so it'd be moved from the center of the parking lot towards the street. It does meet the setback requirement and it meets the size requirement, but now we're told that the 52 inches would exceed the three foot overall height clause in the bylaw. Otherwise, it would be, it needs the square footage, it needs the setback, and it needs the overall height of the sign, but this, this portion here, it exceeds three foot, so we're told that a variance would be required for that as well. And the second monument sign would replace this small sign, this is seven square feet, is this there?
Is there a way you could speak from the podium, just so people at home could hear you, it doesn't get projected?
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. So, the third sign would replace the directional sign at the entrance, and that's the same conditions as the first monument sign, it meets the setback requirement and the square footage requirement, however, the sign box itself exceeds the three foot overall height. So, I'm told that this design, when we first approached the, the building department about replacing the freestanding sign, they did request that we move it closer to the road because the existing Christmas tree shop pylon is smack, it's right in the middle of the parking lot, and at one point, I'm sure that that served very well for visibility, but now the conditions of the road and the tree lines and such, there's no visibility for that, for that sign. So, it was suggested that we move it closer to the road, which, which we did. The difference, the, the problem, not problem, but the, the challenge they had is due to the visibility, they, they wanted to propose one monument sign and then the enter sign, so when you're traveling south on 28, you'll see the monument sign first, then you'll see the enter sign after, and then turn right into the parking lot. If you're traveling north, you'll see the enter sign first, and then you'll turn into the, the parking lot on the left. So, with discussion with the, with the sign designer and Aldi, they just, they felt that that, due to visibility, the tree lines, the traffic, the, how you have to turn into the parking lot, that for motorists and for safety, that made sense for them to present that, that option versus a, a sign in the middle of the parking lot, that's there.
So, the directional is at the main...
Come closer to the mic, please. We have viewers at home.
I didn't realize it was being recorded, you just said it, so, the directional is actually at the main entrance for the, the supermarket, so Aldi, the grocery store, so that's, the directional would help to kind of guide people in that way, versus the other curb cut, which I understand as being, like Chase Bank is being reviewed there, so to kind of funnel the traffic in the most proper entrance, I guess, or the most efficient, safest way, would be to go into that curb cut, so that's what that directional does there. You know, just taking a step back, we, we first initially thought that we would use the existing pylon because we thought that would be easier, until we found out we couldn't use that pylon, once you reskin it, you have to, it's, it's no longer, you can't use the same skin for a different brand, so the sign is no longer valid. So, we said, okay, they suggested moving the sign closer to the street, which we were okay with, but we couldn't go with the height due to the, the trees, so unless you cut down a bunch of trees, you wouldn't actually see the sign if we moved it, so that's why we brought the sign down from, it's, I believe, the, the code calls for up to 18th height, 16 square feet, up to 18 feet in height, so what we did was, we did 16 square feet, but we brought the height down just to, so you can see it through the tree line, as far as the freestanding sign. The sign on the building is a little bit bigger because it's so far back and it's beyond the trees, and the directional, I think, we already addressed as far as going in. I think, you know, one thing, you know, doesn't, doesn't meet the code, but I think, you know, we're really just asking you guys to be fair and consistent as to what you guys have done kind of in the past. Looking at the code, I think some of the three foot height was like from 1999, and then there's been, you know, there's a number of different businesses that have different types of signs that don't meet code, that are beyond the three feet, and, you know, I have those if you need them, but I think you guys know what they are. I think one of the other things, too, is, you know, when you look at the old Christmas tree shop, the sign was really long, right, so maybe the letters were only three feet, but it was like 120 foot square feet in one sign, we're really doing that in two signs, and, you know, the, the, if you look at the, the, the logo, the letters are really like smaller, and it's, it makes for a taller sign, so to make that three feet, it wouldn't really fit within the prototypical design that we have.
Questions from the board? Let's start with Mr. Muscally.
So, just to stay on that point, so you're talking about a variance of 16 inches, basically, is that correct? 36, and you said 52, was that, so it's a 16 inches, as, as far as the lettering is concerned?
Well, the sign, it's, the sign box itself is 12 feet.
Right, but the lettering is the problem, right?
The entire sign height of 12 feet is, is one problem, because that, the building department interprets the code to read a three foot maximum height per sign, so that we have to count the entire sign box, which is 12, so it would be a variance for nine feet.
Mr. Brown?
I think the problem, what you're experiencing is because the sign size is relative to the building size, is that correct? You've got a small facade, which only accommodates a small sign, that's why you're asking for the relief. Are we looking at the front in the middle on the right, is that the front facing the road?
This is, so this right here, this is the front of the building, this springs, this, this space is spring bars, and this is just our main entrance. You know, I think, you know, if you look at these, what we're asking for, it's really not something that hasn't been done existing today for a number of different businesses.
Mr. Zlinski?
I'm sure that one's not to scale, that first, that, that sign, that's, is that directly across from the 99, is that the entrance coming out?
Yes.
What's the distance between that sign and the closest radius on the, where the grass is, yeah? What's the distance between that sign and, and the radius opening up, go up? Go up, 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 right there, that's where cars come out, onto the, onto 28, correct?
Right.
What's the distance between that sign and that radius right there?
You're talking, concerned about blocking...
Sightline, I mean, I mean, it's, that's, that's a, I'm not, I don't have as many problems with the facade as I do with, I know that I literally smacked a truck up as a kid right in that opening.
So, that, so this proposed, the proposed sign will go exactly where the existing sign is at the curb, at the curb cut?
But is it any taller or wider than the existing?
It's actually, it's smaller, it's the square footage... It's, the square footage is smaller. And I believe it's, it's. What's the overall height on that?
So, the overall height is nine versus this, the, the, the existing one's like eighteen, I believe.
No, this, so this, for this one, this one's seven square foot. And that one's five square foot. And the height would be, this is a little smaller than what's the one on.
Oh, yeah, this is, this is much bigger. This is.
Yeah.
But that one's on a pole.
Correct.
You can see under the sign.
Correct, correct.
This one isn't on a pole.
That's correct.
And it totally blocks.
Blocks, yeah.
And that would be my only concern.
And that.
And that's, that's something like, so like with the CVS has the two poles. I mean, we could, we could figure that out if it's, that's what it needs to be.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. Brown and then Ms. Goldstone.
I believe that the building commissioner is also including the base as part of his calculation of size, is he not?
No, so this is sixteen square feet.
The sign box will be sixteen.
The sign, the sign size itself is, is fine with the code. It's the height of that sign. So, you have up to eighteen squi, eighteen overall height with a freestanding sign as per the code. But you have a, something we haven't mentioned is a seven foot clearance. So, usually you have like a pole. You know, we, we put more of a monument sign because we lowered it, because it wasn't going to be at the, so we thought it would look more appealing, I guess, if it's on a brick foundation versus a pole. You know, we can work with a pole, we just thought that would look nicer on the brick.
Ms. Goldstone?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, well, and Scott, Mr. Zelinski, your question about the sign right at the entrance, that's the smaller one over there that's right next to the entrance, right?
This, this one is at the entrance.
And then that one is?
That one's right on the street.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that was, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, that one is at the entrance, yes.
That one's right at the edge of the entrance. That one is?
Yes.
Some distance down the road from the entrance, right?
This one's, this one's more in the middle of the parking lot. Like if you, across from the, I think it's the Rockland Trust, right? And, you know, the, the directional sign too is, is up higher on the brick, kind of to match the, the existing sign, the other freestanding sign. We could certainly lower that a little bit more to look more like the Citizens Bank. They have different directionals. If, you know, like say a three courses of brick is more acceptable, that'd be fine.
I'm also curious with the larger signs in particular on the facade up higher and being internally illuminated, whether there's any mitigation of, of light pollution from those. Right, that's, that's light in all directions, right?
Yeah, I mean, it, it faces this parking lot. And then the other side faces the Cappies. Yeah, so Greg, Greg. Specifically, it's the property owner. He's here. He's just, he was just mentioning that we just, he's as part of the renovation, he's replacing all the, updating all the lighting in the lot.
More questions or comments from the board?
I'd like to hear from town manager about why the building commissioner feels like it's important that we stick to the rules.
Why he feels we stick to the rules?
I mean, is it, is he, is he tossing this to, tossing this to us because we can offer the, the relief because?
So, 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 so let me, maybe, let me, Peter and I have been talking about, you know, so for tonight's purposes, we can, I, I can talk about the entrance signs and I think, and I had a conversation with the building commissioner's office. And Eleanor specifically wrote up these descriptions, right? I think the issue that they have right now with regards to the entrance signs, I'll call them, is that I think it's fifty-two inches. The signage itself is fifty-two inches. And, and the bylaw limits it to, to three feet. So, that would be the ask. I'm just, let me just start at the, you know, thirty thousand foot. Is that Aldi consider, the applicant consider reducing the dimensions of that or the, the heights? I don't think the concern is much about the pedestal, the base that the sign is sitting on, as I, as I read through the notes. You know, clearly, I, I don't have a lot of historical perspective of what's been, what's been approved in terms of a variance in this area. We talked earlier about uniformity on another agenda. This is my attempt to try to be uniform. And so, so if we look at the entrance signs, I would recommend that the select boards require the applicant to, to scale those down to fit within. I think there's an opportu, I believe I could squarely get behind recommending that the select board consider a variance for the internal illumination. The concern I have is that we don't really have a bylaw lang, the language in the bylaw doesn't really speak to how bright is too bright. I, I think to select board member Goldstone's comment earlier. But I, I think in terms of a broad ask, I think all of these signs are inter, internally illuminated.
Correct.
Yes.
And as you know, that's not something in the past that, that select board has, has, but this is in, in the business district, so probably less of a. It's in business, not ag, right? Less of a concern. So, that would be, in my opinion, a recommendation I, right now I could make that select board consider that, that variance to, to, to grant and allow the internal illumination. Again, to the extent the applicant can reduce the, 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 the dimensions, the height dimensions, and I know that's a challenge. You want that visibility from the, from the, from the roadway. But to the extent the applicant can, can reduce that.
If I could, can I ask you, I guess, so as far as the height? As far as the height reduction, which sign are you talking about?
Yeah, so I was focusing immediately on the, what I'll call the entrance sign.
The directional?
Select board has, in their packet, you all have some illustrations and some notes, basically. And those are from the inspector who went out and took a look. And, and specifically the, the directional signs. But I think the comment was made, they can have the directional sign, they just can't have the logo. You know, clearly, in my mind, that can, that introduces a bit of confusion if you have an entrance, a directional arrow. But it doesn't have the, 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 basically the entity that you're, the direct traffic to. So, so again, reasonableness, I, I would say the logo would be okay. And I'm looking at the far left illustration, the Aldi logo, provided the applicant could reduce the dimensions of that to, to try to get it within the, within the bylaw.
Within that three foot.
And that's the difference between thirty-six inches and fifty-two inches.
In, in, in effect, that's, that's. That's my understanding. That's, that was, that was the concern that, to be consistent and, 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 you know, strict conformity with the existing bylaw, to the extent the applicant can shrink that to thirty-six inches versus fifty-two.
Ms. Goldstone?
I'm sorry.
Does anyone happen to know what the square footage of either Shaw's or Stop &amp; Shop's facade signage is?
I will say, I just, I don't know that offhand, but I do have a list of examples.
I do.
Is that a difference? I did go by Shaw's today and that's, that's got to be five to six feet, I think. When you look at the Shaw's and the Osko, it's all one sign, right? So, you, when you look at a sign, you got to draw the box around it. That's pretty significant. You know, another example would be the Convenient MD right across the street, right?
They're four foot, they have a four foot overall.
Yeah, and then you have Lumba.
Ideal flooring.
Ideal flooring is.
This is a seven inch.
It's huge.
Height wall sign. So, we, we did take a little, they did take a little drive around and tried to survey some in the area just to see what was there.
I think, I could, I think some of the confusion on that part is some of these have been around a long time before regulations were as held to the high standard. So, that's one thing. The other thing is developers often build the buildings to accommodate signage. Like CBS, when they were building the, the one on the corner of Jones Road, they wanted a massive gable. And the planning board talked them out of it. Said it's really, it's, you know, obtrusive. And so, they agreed and they scaled it down. Turned out they made that the model for their future Cape Cod locations, so. That's, I mean, I appreciate that you're trying to have a design here.
Yeah, I guess what I was getting at is that I, I totally understand when it's three feet primarily of letters of having that height restriction there. This is clearly a completely different design. I'm sympathetic to the fact, you know, the, the logo lockup as it is. Just thinking about, I'd be comfortable with varying from the three foot height because it's not just, because of the shape of the, the actual logo and signage. But just wondering how it compares total square footage wise in terms of the facade lighting.
Yes. So, because of the orientation, it looks, it's above that three, but it's not, you know, if you look at the square footage, like say, compared to a Convenient MD, they're at about a two hundred and forty square feet. When you look at the, because they have a sign on both sides, it's one forty plus a minus, you know. But, you know, we'd be at one twenty with two signs on each side. And I think because of the orientation, you know, instead of being like this, it's like this, right? So, you're kind of well above that three feet, but you're not too far beyond the square footage. So, I think, you know, we could certainly look to reduce the directional sign if that's what you're looking for. I don't think that's, you know, to bring the height of that down.
We're in a discussion phase. Ma'am?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have a bigger, as bigger problem with, with facade signage because of the way that it's structured and it's a remodel. And they're rejuvenating that and, and that's where I would, my, my biggest concern is the size on the street and the safety aspect. And the two signs kind of going like this now as you approach it, it masks that. So, that would be my only issue with that. If they could shrink that down, I'd sign on to the rest of it. Or be, you know, I'd be soft on the rest of it. Because we, you know, we do need to rejuvenate that area over there and it's, it's a nice design. And if there's going to be accommodations made, I'd rather make them up there where everybody else has got lights. And maintain safety down below at the roadway. I mean, that's just where I'm at with it. But.
I agree with that.
Counts for anything.
I am concerned also about the, the brick base and maybe if it was on a pole and if it was the right size, then.
Yeah, we just, I just thought that looked nice, that's all. And we do. It matches the building, you can see the facade of the building.
We do have some precedent in that just recently about creating a sightline for safety.
Yeah.
Right up that, coming out of the backside of the mall. So, there is precedent setting decisions that prove that out.
So, so what if we did like a two slim brick poles like the CVS kind of to hold that up? I mean, could we resubmit something like that? Because that would give you the sightline underneath the, the sign. And we reduce the directional sign so that the, the base it's on is probably only, versus, you know, this high, it's probably this high.
Is that something the board would be amenable to and it would come back to us?
I'd be happy for them to come back with a redesign.
Could I ask about a decision on the building today, just so we can order it? Because we're under construction. If you can, if you can't, you know.
Answer us, when, when do you expect to be open? Because that's what everybody in town wants to know.
Am I being recorded? We're actually planning, you know, September, October, opening.
The building.
Okay, so, the question is, will the board approve the building facade signs? And ask the applicant to come back with the road directional signs?
I'd certainly move that.
Am I correct?
I'd move that.
Does that sound reasonable?
Because you guys are working on it now, or I mean, you're building up on top of the hill now. I'd move that, Madam Chair.
So, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion, I'm sorry, Mr. Scali, I didn't hear. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
Just one more, there's four signs total. We only seem to be talking about three.
So, signs one and two are the facade. In your packets, to keep it clear.
That's all we're, that's all we're voting on.
So, one side and then the other side.
Yeah, but there's four signs mentioned in the packet. I just want to get better understanding where the fourth sign is.
The one's on twenty-eight.
The freestanding sign?
Yeah. Oh, okay. So, the freestandings are going to come back, both of them?
They're the ones we want to reconsider.
It's not just the one, okay.
Good clarification.
Madam Chair, one other element.
Yes, please.
And I'll ask the town, assistant town manager. So, I, I think we should also address tonight the illumination, internal illumination. Would that be preferable having that included in tonight's?
Yes, and I wish we, you know, the board has talked about the, how bright is the illumination with respect to the Cape Cod church. And I don't know that we, we have particularly good metrics for you. So, I guess it, you know, but I, I, I think it's important that the board at least, you know, raise the question. Perhaps the applicant can describe how bright the signs are going to be and, and if you have comparisons to some other signs in the area.
Yeah, I could, I mean.
Would help us visualize that.
I don't have that right now, but I could bring back the specifications for the sign when I resubmit.
I do know that in Wareham, right up across from our properties in Wareham, there's an Aldi's and it's not an aggressive, there's a Jersey Mike's and stuff like that over there. And it's not, it's not as bright up there as it is at the church. Different kind of bright.
Is there a problem, though, approving the, the building signs without knowing the?
No, I think you're, well, so in my opinion, you're proving the, your, your, the variance you're granting is the dimensions of the signage.
Size, perfect.
With the exception of the, the free, the, the two freestanding signs tonight.
Fine, I just needed that. I'll go to Ms. Goldstone and then Mr. Brown. Can the, can the wattage or the brightness of the illumination be changed after it's installed? Does that, does that need to be set at this point, is what I'm asking?
I have no idea.
Yeah, they, they have modular, they can modulate that and adjust it.
I'm going to take back my, if I could, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So, I was trying to address that issue tonight, but I think it may be better if the applicant is, is willing to, to take a shot at providing some, some, some others, some lumens kind of readings, select boards and, and the precedent we were talking about, there was a, there was an applicant a couple of, a month ago. So, that was a church and it was in an agricultural district. But we are in the habit of looking at lumens and trying to use that. And if you can, compare that to some of the lumen of the existing signs in the area, the luminosity and some of the existing signs. So, I'm going to retract my original recommendation that we try to address the internal illumination tonight. Push that to the next meeting when the applicant comes back with the freestanding signs.
Perfect.
And then we, we can kill that, we can address the internal illumination when, if you're able, whatever data you're able to kind of bring back to us and show.
Yeah, I'll see what I can do.
Mr. Brown?
We did have a sign company expert who was here a few months ago talking about a different sign and said that they could easily just make it variable. And if it's a problem, turn it down later. So, maybe you could look into whether or not that's something that could be.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring all that and, and.
One, one more quick thing if I may.
Go ahead.
Is, is anybody else ahead? Being that this is a chain, I'm sure that there's precedence in all the other towns that they have done business with that has made an allowable brightness to these things that they may have a record for. To be able to compare it to what other towns are acceptable.
I was just going to say, it's, it's, it's a standard illumination. It's not so, but I'll bring that in for you.
Probably show a night view of an existing Aldi sign and show the night view.
The ability to adjust, though, I, is, I think, a really important one.
Okay.
Okay, so do, would someone like to take a shot at that motion?
Madam Chair, if I might, I was just, just, I think the motion, and I don't, I'm not going to have necessarily the motion, but I think what you want to do is a motion to approve the size variance for the two signs on the building. So, they'll come back later for the illumination variance for those two signs.
Okay, so there's, there's the motion. Does someone want to put that forward?
I'll put it forward as, I make a motion to allow them to continue their construction on the size variances on the two buildings up. And they're going to come back with illumination and the freestanding on the, the roadways.
Okay, so we, we are granting that variance for the signs on the buildings.
The size of the signs on the buildings.
Size of the signs on the buildings. Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you next time.
All right. Okay, so we're going to move into the consent agenda. I will read the items on the consent agenda.
Before you do that, you guys, when you come back, you may, just because that was kind of convoluted, if you have some other kind of presentation that they can film, would that be all right?
Yes, and if you could project it. You need to project it.
Sorry about that.
I can just hook up to my laptop?
Yes. Okay, that's okay. So, I'm going to go ahead with the consent agenda. If there's anything on the consent agenda that any board member would like to hold, please notify me as the chair. Licenses, approve application for a special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Highfield Hall Gardens, fifty-six Highfield Drive, Fabius Falmouth. Females Garden Party, Thursday, six twenty-seven, twenty-four, from five to seven P.M. Approve application for a special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Cape Arts and Entertainment Cape Symphony Presents, Cape Cod Conservatory, sixty Highfield Drive, Falmouth, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, June to June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. Administrative orders. Request for variance of a sign code, off-premises signs, Cub Scout Pack forty-one, display from eight-thirty, twenty-four to nine-twenty-three, twenty-four. Request for a variance of the sign code, special events, Juneteenth event sign at St. Barnaby's. Request for a variance of the sign code, special events, Juneteenth event sign at Saint Barnabas Church, ninety-one Main Street. Approve Eversource petition to install approximately thirty feet of a one-to-three-inch conduit under town roads, starting at the hand, handhole to be labeled one-nine-three-three-H-H-A at base of existing pole, one-nine-three-three to customer property. This work is necessary to provide electric services to fourteen Montgomery Ave. Approve a letter of support for the FY twenty-five Community One-Stop for Growth Expression of Interest. EOI for Nathan Ellis Highway with one-fifty-one Water Main Extension.
Madam Chair, I'll move to the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move the consent agenda. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks. Okay, we're going to go into review and vote, the, approve the meeting minutes of the public session, May twenty-twenty-four.
They look thorough and accurate to me, I would move approval unless there are corrections.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes of meetings, public session, May twenty-twenty-four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one abstain on the extension. Thank you. Okay, town manager, do you have a supplemental report?
I do, just have one quick update. This is exciting, so I want a select board in the community to know. So I want to thank Assistant Town Manager for working with the staff on developing a request for qualifications for an owner's project manager for the new police facility. The advertisement, well, the RFQ document was posted on the town's websites last Friday, so it's available. An ad ran in the enterprise and this Wednesday, June fifth, the RFQ is going to be posted to the central, central register. So exciting news. One of the roles of the OPM that we're anticipating is to assist us in selecting an architect. And if we want to retain the same architect through design and construction without having to have a second competitive selection process, it's important that we have that OPM in place. We also think that an OPM in advance is going to be very beneficial in selecting a site. Perhaps that, that OPM is going to have some experience in looking at site requirements. So I just want a select board to know that we're moving on that project, the new police facility feasibility and design work. As far as the timeline, Peter and I spoke about this before the meeting tonight. We estimate that if, you know, depending upon how successful we are with engaging with an OPM, sometime in April, we'd be going after the design, design monies. And then the following November, the following year would be construction dollars, so we're moving that project along.
I really appreciate the update. I think it's really important for the board to know, since we moved the creation of a new police station to the top of our priority list, I think it's important that the board be updated regularly. So thank you very much for that, that's important.
Could I ask one question about that?
Go ahead.
How does the payment to the project manager go? I mean, do we, are we potentially signing on too early because we have to pay him a regular payment? Or is it percentage of the project, how does that work?
How do we do the hash flow?
Yeah, so we, what we do is the contract is based on the scope of work with phases, so it's not time-based. So, good, good question. You know, if we were just paying them a flat monthly rate over the whole multi-year period, it, it would be really early to start. So they can start, do a task, bill us for those hours, stop. So we have two hundred thousand dollars currently appropriated for initiating the feasibility study. So that will get us into, you know, the first step is feasibility study, site selection. So what are the, what are the needs of the department? How big does the building need to be? How big does the site need to be? Then we're going to identify a couple of sites and work with the OPM and the architect, engage the entire community on, okay, here, you know, here are a couple of sites that we might be able to cite a police station on, you know, do we, are we ready to, do we want to, are we able to pick one? And can we move forward? So that two hundred thousand dollars is going to carry us through conceptual design, perhaps schematic design, but it's not going to be sufficient for the full design development. So that's why the town manager was referencing, this will get us through November, possibly by the time April rolls around. I, I don't anticipate by April we'll have construction cost estimates that are far enough along to go to the voters and say, here's the number of million dollars that we are asking for, for a debt exemption for a bond. So we'll probably need a little more design money in April to get us maybe to November. Well, actually, it would be, it would be a debt exemption, so it would be the following April that we would be looking at construction funding.
Great question.
Thank you.
You all set, Mr. Unshut?
All set, thank you.
Okay, select board reports. I'm just going to quickly remind everyone that at our next meeting, we will relook at our committee assignments. So typically what happens, Ms. Goldstone, is anything that was assigned to Ms. Scott Price will automatically go to you. And then if there are other things that you want or something that, you know, you feel like it's too much, we, we have that discussion. And what we do is anything that anybody doesn't want, we give to Bob. Bob is very good about going to.
Take them unwillingly.
He goes to everything, it's, it's amazing.
We'll circulate a list of the assignments, the current assignments.
You, you should have a list of the current.
I do, I just.
Okay, I got a copy for.
You got it, okay.
Okay, so you should have, you know, so start thinking about that and we'll do those reassignments.
Sometimes we horse trade.
Yes, don't get involved in that. Okay, other select board reports.
What'd you do last week?
I was just going to say that I had the honor of attending the fortieth anniversary celebration for newcomers earlier this evening on behalf of the select board to present the citation that all of you.
Excellent.
Signed and they were very grateful. Representative Fernandez was also there and they were glad to have the, the representation there, so.
Good job.
She's already made us look good.
All right.
That's awesome. Mr. Brown, anything?
The short-term rental working group, we discussed last week about the different options, options for us to move forward efficiently. And we agreed that the short-term rental working group will focus on their ideas for regulations and the town staff, I guess, is working on deciding if there's going to be a vendor that may assist with getting the information together. So we won't spin our wheels doing both, we'll work on the regulations. I was invited to attend the Mass Cultural Council. They were interested in how the Falmouth Select Board decided to fund the local cultural council at a higher level and what we see as a result. So that was interesting and I was glad to be able to go to that and explain that, you know, it seems like it's a good investment because we've got a lot more activities going on and it brings more people to town for positive events. And that was my couple of highlights.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Muscally?
So Saturday, I had the pleasure of attending the Falmouth High School fiftieth graduation. It was wonderful to see the students and how excited they were and the various addresses from, from the students. Mr. Brown and I did attend the hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary of Woods Hole Golf Club last, Saturday before last. And this morning I was at the senior center with Chief Laurie and the Cape Cod, Tom Cahir from CCRTA. Gave a very nice discussion about all the good things that the CCRTA is doing, especially with respect to elders and disabled individuals, so.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Zelinski?
Saturday, I worked a community event with the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club. It's an annual yard sale that they collect. And this is probably my tenth, ninth or tenth year doing it. And I can officially say there was not one complaint about what we're doing wrong from the, any of the thousands of people that came. This is the first year that there was, I, it was incredible. I mean, people are upbeat about how the town is and how everybody's getting together and, and how it's being run. And it was, it was good to hear.
Good. It was a big, pretty big event.
Pardon?
It was a pretty big yard sale.
Very big event.
Sixteen thousand five hundred dollars they raised, so, yeah. They do a lot, they do a lot of scholarship funds and stuff for kids. It's a great, it's a great time and, and I'm a captive audience because I, I provide the security part for it. So I see them on the way in and on the way out, so they give me their two cents. And it was all positive this year, which was very satisfying. So I congratulate all of you as well.
Thank you.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Goldstone?
Seconding it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome, thanks, folks.